I'd like to call the order, September 26, 2019, Spring Grove Board of Education Judy. Call?
Yes, Mr. Anderson.
Here.
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 Stand and pledge. Is it hiding behind that object?
The imaginary flag.
Okay, well, pretend there's a flag back there.
My pledge would be to the flag.
In the United States of America, in a truly public, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You got to figure that one out. Mine of the works have the time anyway. So, all right, item 1.2, adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Stukey?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Chad?
Yes.
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 All right, item 1.3, approval of number 12, 2019 meeting minutes. Is there a motion to approve?
Seven.
Circle.
Stukey?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Chad?
Yes.
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 All right, item 2.1, executive session, to consider the compensation of a public employee or official. Is there a motion to approve?
Sent out.
Just a reminder that everything discussed in executive session should remain confidential.
Stukey?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Chad?
Yes.
Yes.
So, we will move into item 3.1, the Spring Grove Education Association report. I believe we have anybody here? Item 3.2, the Spring Grove Classified Employees Association report. I do not believe we have any public participation prearranged. Item 3.3, any other public participation on any agenda items? Okay, then we will move into work session, which I believe is 4.2, the master facilities discussion. Ms. Floyd, Ms. Hester, Ms. Rosen.
So, we met with Steve Hammond Paul on September 5th to kind of do a reset on facilities and extra planning process. And Mr. Thackeray brought his colleague, Mr. Gerv, and we included Mr. Robinson in that discussion because he is now our director of facilities and so he's going to be a key person in that, in the process moving forward. So, we shared some concerns with Mr. Thackeray and Mr. Williams was here this evening. And I forwarded you the email that the team was, gave us very valuable feedback on how moving forward their thoughts on where this process should go. So, Mr. Thackeray and his colleagues were very open-minded and very much appreciated the feedback, willing to kind of take a step back and let's start over because we have new players at the table. And Rob took the big spreadsheet that everybody saw that was really high in the sky for the next 10 years and has truly done a great job of revising that if you want to speak to what you did and what the outcome is.
Yeah, absolutely. So, what it is, I took each individual school and got with the maintenance team, got with the HPA C companies, any company that really would play a part in the infrastructure changes that we may do. And looking at it like Ms. Hester said, it was high in the sky. I mean, it was, it was in a perfect world where money was no object. Sure, that sounded like a really great plan. But the essential items that we need over the next 10 years to maintain this district where there's going to be longevity to this district. It went from 55.7 million, we reduced it down just under 20 million, about 19.9 million for a new total of 35 million. That's a more realistic number and I feel what we feel with the numbers really reflect the true cost that's going to be associated to this district over the next 10 years.
But just from a maintenance and repair point, we're not talking any sort of additional needs, it's just keeping the buildings that we have.
It's keeping the buildings, now it's adding, one of the things that I kept in there was additional parts on the working, you know, but it's not building up. It's, that is definitely not in here. There may be some additional costs to maybe add on, you know, in addition, something like that, but no infrastructure, breaking ground and, you know, making a whole new school build. It's not, it's not.
So, how much useful life does that add to the buildings?
It just depends on the components that you put in. So, you know, if we spend $400,000 on that.
Oh, I meant if we did all of it, the 30 million, does that get us?
I mean, you're getting, you're going to get another 30, 40, 40 years out of, by going 36 million dollars worth of infrastructure repairs, you're going to get 30, 40, 40 years out of, out of this facility.
But it doesn't capture any of the things like enrollment or population or anything else we want to do around building safety, I mean, all of those sorts of things are still, still separated from.
It is, I, yeah, now, you know, there is some things that are built in here, sure, absolutely, but, you know, that's where SHP comes into play. One things, yeah, some of the stuff that is captured here is going to rely on what they say and what they propose, but that's where we really got to work to see, you know, where we're going, where we can really spend the additional money.
How much of the 35.8 million is already in the budget because they're regular things that we were going to address?
Like PM stuff, so our budget, and the five-year plan, I think, has how much in there?
Well, we set aside 600,000 this year and 250,000 each year. We do have a series of leases to where we have the module leases, we have bus leases, we have computer leases, we have all those leases built into the five-year. So, it's maybe around 10 million per sale total. So, we're looking at a huge deficit in being able to pay the obligations of the 36 million dollars on what we have set aside. We're not even close to being able to have the money to do all of these repairs.
So, like 10 million of the 35 million would be what's in the budget?
I would say about 10 million.
Okay.
And that doesn't include any preventative maintenance stuff that we may have to employ. And I'll tell you, one of the things is our payment, we have no PM on our payment and we need to start chipping away over that over the next 10 years and that's going to end at this 36 million dollars because, you know, we don't want to have to rip out all of our payments. So, we want to try to PM it as much as we can.
And so, just so you understand what that means, so basically when he receives his, say, 600,000 this year and 500,000, he takes that and he says, what do we absolutely have to address this year? So, what he means by preventative maintenance, we don't have cycles for everything. We have, we have, we're getting better with, we have a textbook replacement cycle, we have a, we have, you know, some of our computers or our technology is on replacement cycles, but as far as our maintenance items, we don't. We just have those large list of unmet needs and then we have whatever he can actually purchase or do within that 500,000 to 600,000 dollars that he has. Everything else is, is a Band-Aid. You might put a little patch, it might fill a hole, it's not, it's not enough. We don't have the resources to satisfy the need.
So, we can put out a little fire, but?
Yes.
There's going to be more of a little fire. There's really more, so that's not a reason.
We are chipping away at it. We're definitely, like, I've spent a lot of money on security and safety, all on cameras and making sure that the building is safe. Sure, that, that's great, but that doesn't give us new, or doesn't, you know, give us the longevity in something that we really should, you know, put some money into. Another point is like the HPA C that you approved, I think it was last month, that there is a preventative maintenance clause in there. So, the new contracts we're going into, that is a piece that we're building into now where what happens.
And like one of the, one of the samples is, we have cameras, Mr. White, so we might be able to invest in replacing some of those cameras, but we don't necessarily, if new cameras or a newer type of system or those types of things are wanted, that wouldn't be something that we would be able to address. We would barely be able to, to replace the ones that are already there that are just getting old or outdated. See what I mean? So, we don't have a preventative plan in place for us to cycle out old with new and additional.
So, I don't mean to put you on the spot here, Mr. Williams, but I will.
Go ahead.
Yeah, because I'm just reading through, I want to first thank you for your service on the committee at this point. Appreciate the note that was shared through Ms. Hester, the thoughts and the individuals that we're serving. And it seems as if, I think, in reading back through this note, you guys were struggling a little bit with, we just described there was this sort of big spreadsheet, it was kind of tough to make heads or tails of it, to understand sort of the current, just what we need in terms of maintenance and that sort of thing. And it sounds like we've done some work to hopefully get that down to a manageable number. So, it seems to me that a first step would be, you know, if we were to continue down this process would be to sort of get the committee up to speed on that and maybe it is, go to each building and go through that list and sort of truly understand, you know, what is making up that 35 or where that, that number was, so that you guys have a better handle on that. I mean, I think that's sort of along the lines of your phase one.
That is what we had requested to do as part of the process that was set up. We didn't really get to that yet, though.
Okay.
Yeah, but.
That's really kind of phase one, right, of what you had come in?
Yeah, when we kind of launched into this initially, it was, it was, hey, let's evaluate the state of the current buildings and see if there's a need to build something at the same time. And that's where we had the recommendation of it would be, we might be better served to just assess, if that's what you want from the community, assess the state of the current buildings first and then based on being informed by that, then we could look and see what we would do from there.
I think that seems logical.
I assume that with the list that you have right now and that dollar amount, that should we determine that there's, coin of raised sunset, a couple of buildings along the way, that that number gets smaller and then there's another bucket over here that's obviously going to get a lot bigger in terms of what that new cost would be. And I think that, so I agree with what you're saying there in terms of, let's evaluate what we have, but I think the reality is, I don't, I'm going to go out on a limb here and assume that we probably don't have the appetite to maintain all of the existing buildings out another 30 or 40 years because some of them just, quite frankly, don't real, real force anymore. So, you know, I'm hoping we can take your list, whittle it down to the ones that are going to still be here for decades and then the ones that aren't, those come off the list, those dollars get freed up and then, you know, we ultimately determine that, I guess, probably phase two, like you laid out, that, you know, what's, what's the new, what if new facilities look like and cost?
And I think that that was, when we had our meeting with SHP, we did explain to them that I think as part of the reset, we wanted everyone in the group to have a really good understanding of what that, what was on that spreadsheet. Visit all the buildings before you start talking about anything else, to get a very, to get everyone's mind wrapped around.
That is what we like.
Because that would help the second piece of the conversation is, wow, we saw this over here, we need to figure something out or we're happy with this or whatever comes from that conversation, from that initial piece, needs to be a good understanding of where we currently are.
Yeah, coming into it knowing that, hey, this building needs 15 million of that 36 million of the repairs.
Right.
So, maybe it doesn't make sense, right?
Right.
And I think it was just too high in the sky, vision, 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 and not really showing.
But it sounds like you, I mean, through your conversations with them, they've been receptive to sort of an approach like we're describing here.
Yes, absolutely.
Go back through, reorient everybody, get everybody on the same page in terms of that list and then move the conversation into the more forward looking.
Right. And we just weren't real sure how much we needed SHP for that first phase. We thought that, you know, that's what we guys.
And that's where we were kind of discussing a little bit before the meeting. I mean, I think, though, that that list that we got, though, that you started with was really from SHP, right? I mean, they were, so I think they can be a part of that process.
And that information from, from what I gathered from the person who I replaced, from the agency perspective, he was told to capture every potential thing that he possibly could. That's where your 55.7.
Just, I'd rather, I'd rather go reverse and whittle it down versus miss something and then.
And like, you know, of the 35, 36 million, maybe there's something in there that we definitely need that maybe I, that I took off that, you know, a different perspective and they shouldn't.
Which that's where I would, I would like, like, if we were at Clark Creek, I would hope that Carrie could be there, you know, the administrative people could be there at those buildings because I would think that, I mean, I'm sure you guys are interconnected, but as we're going through it with the facilities, the facility team is going through it, I would think that they would have questions that maybe the administrator would be the one that would have a more in-depth understanding of just because they're the ones that live it every day. So, I think that that was the other thing, because I'm part of that group, too.
We were a little concerned that that was not going to be the case. Again, we didn't get into that yet to know fully well, but just some of the questions to Mr. Thackeray and stuff beforehand, it was, there was a little bit of concern that that was.
Right.
That we were going to have people there to answer those.
Right.
And we have maintenance people, I mean, we have one assigned to each building, so they're going to know a lot about this, so we'll have them along as well.
Great idea.
Yeah, and I guess for me, I mean, to the question of whether SHP should be a part of that, I mean, I would think that naturally through some of those conversations that you're going through and orienting yourself to the 35 million and talk about the opens, there are going to be things that start to sort of bubble up that will impact sort of the second phase of this, the more forward-looking phase of this. And I guess for me, I think there is value in having them there to hear that as part of, firsthand, as we're going through and level-setting on phase one, so that as we move into phase two, they've heard some of that conversation that's sort of happening organically on each of these sort of reviews of the different buildings. That's my opinion, that I think there's value in them hearing that.
And I think, you know, Steve Hammond Paul is what they live every day, they would be able to say to us, whoa, if you're going to put 8 million in, that's not your best use of money because they know that the industry and what current is, and is that better than retrofitting? I will also say that I, after, when we kind of put a pause on things, I was talking to another, a board member in another school district and she had done this type of work professionally and in their school district, she had used SHP also and she, she had not worked with Mr. Thackeray, but she had worked with another person that were in the station and she said she was incredibly happy with the work that they had done. So, that was good, getting an outside perspective of somebody that had worked with them, with just how detailed they were and, so that was great because this is a new thing for us. And I think it's also good for them to know that we're going to ask questions and we're a very involved community. I think you guys have done a great job with, you know, what you, the questions that you brought to the administration and just, it's wonderful having community members that care that much. So, I think it's good for Mr. Thackeray to know that it's a, it's a community that is going to, you know, have great questions and want to be involved. So, I think that starting off like this is actually a great way to start off and to kind of, like, like what Carrie said, to reset and kind of approach it maybe a little bit differently than what it felt like to begin with.
It sounds like, yeah, it sounds like they've been receptive to that. I guess one of the other things you referenced in your, Ms. Williams, was the potential of waiting until we sort of were a bit more stable in terms of having a permanent superintendent.
Yes.
Again, I can't speak for the rest of the board members, but, you know, at least my opinion, while that may be ideal, given where we're at on the financial task force and how that's moving and just, I know we're going to have a presentation on the five-year forecast, I think at our next meeting, you know, my opinion is that we continue to keep this moving. And I know it's going to take a while, even just a sort of reset, we've already lost a little bit of ground, but.
But certainly, that's certainly a decision for all of you guys to make.
Yeah, I'm addressing that, yeah.
Just from a community perspective, I just think that, you know, I have three kids in the school district now, I've got my fourth one coming in, y'all have four in there next year. I just think that it will be better received by the community if things, if things kind of settle out a little bit first. And we didn't get fully into the process, but a little bit we did see, I just wasn't seeing a, a super urgent need, so that was the.
Well, come to the next meeting. And we'll talk about the five-year forecast.
I'm sorry.
I said, come to the next meeting when we talk about the five-year forecast and your thinking that the urgent need may be changed.
Well, yeah, fair enough.
So, and that's, I guess, where I'm, is that, you know, I, yes, from an immediate, you know, and the roof's not going to collapse tomorrow, let's hope.
Okay.
You know, fingers crossed. But I mean, I do think that, you know, this process of looking forward, I would say, I guess, in my opinion, is overdue, that we have been kind of flying without any sort of real plan or direction. And again, just for me, I think I prefer to keep it moving, all the sort of changes we've had notwithstanding, just so that the sooner we can put sort of a forward, we can plan together the better, even if maybe some of the folks in different seats may change, but that's going to always be, I think, the reality of what we're operating against. That's my opinion.
Yeah, and I think, to tack on to what Ms. Blodgy said, and I, that this is something that I feel like should have been done 5, 10 years ago. And as we do get into the forecasting process, this is always a sticking point for me because it's, as we go through and we look at our cash balance depleting every year, the big fear for me is, is that, as Ms. Floyd said, we kind of Band-Aid things, you know, very little preventative maintenance because of costs. And I'm waiting for that, you know, shoe to drop, where something major does break, you know, the ceiling does fall in, it's somewhere and then, you know, we, we basically have ourselves a cash situation that the state's going to take notice of and, you know, that scares me a bit. So, even, even though it's not a perfect scenario in terms of where we are from, you know, a district, I, I would feel more comfortable having an 80% idea of kind of what needs to be done and acknowledging that as we continue to move forward, we'll probably have to refine that and shape it and, you know, I hope you and other community members are there to guide us. But at the same time, I, I acknowledge that sometimes building the cars we drive down the road is not the ideal situation, but it's something we probably just have to do. So, I, again, I support what Ms. Blodgy says, I think we just keep pushing ahead and acknowledge that it's just, it's not ideal, but, again, I really commend you for helping us with this and it's greatly appreciated.
Well, there's, there's a team of us.
Absolutely, every one of you, I thank.
Were there other questions on this? And we have the contract with SHP on the agenda for later, any other questions, discussion?
I appreciate you guys taking the comments from the community because this is, if this is something we're going to move forward with, I think it's critical that we have the community on board with whatever this is. Yes, the board votes on it, but this is something we have to hear from the community on the financial side and the facility side. So, that's one of the concerns from the get-go, that we really get the buy-in. So, I think that with Mr. Williams bringing this forward and then you guys taking that to SHP is, thank you for doing that. I think that's a critical piece here and you coming to the meeting to be able to share back to the team, I just think this is a great partnership. So.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for really paying attention to all of that partnership. I don't have questions.
Thank you.
Well, yeah, I'm going to, but just let me know when you guys move on then or go off to the next thing.
You don't want us to leave four kids?
Are you excited to start?
I will email you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right, so we'll move to item 4.3, a presentation on our report card.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, board. We're not sure if you're in a good position to see the screens.
I was just going to say, we've got the screen, but it's got the whole.
So, we wonder if you might want to move. And that's up to you.
I may just move around.
Okay.
What are you going to watch that?
I'll watch. Thank you.
I got my glasses.
I will see about itself. I guess I thought. Yes. There we go. All right. Yes, sir.
We felt a little confused a lot of the video.
All right, we're pleased to bring you our report card from the 2018-19 school year and we're going to give you fair warning. This is about a 25-minute presentation over 180 days worth of work. So, we've tried to condense it as much as we can, but to also still give you the full picture of what our district last year for the report card. As you can see, again, we have six components that make up our report card, including achievement, progress, gap closing, grad rate, improving at-risk K3 readers, and prepared for success. So, we're going to go over each of these different component areas with you and we'll be happy to answer any questions you have at the end. For starters, these six components are made up of 20% on the report card for achievement and progress and each of the other areas is worth 15% on the report card. The first item that we're going to take a look at are our achievement scores and as you can see here, we have our elementary achievement scores and you can see by grade level third through fifth, we have English Language Arts and Math in all three grade levels in elementary and then we add Science on in fifth grade. In order to make the indicator, to pass the indicator, you have to have an 80% passage rate in each area. So, this column indicates what our passage rate was in each of those areas and then the last column either has a green check or a red X. So, the green checks are any scores that hit the 80 and above and any of the red Xs are areas that we need to improve within the achievement area to get above the 80% rate. Moving from elementary into our middle grades, from sixth through eighth grade, again, English Language Arts and Math in all three grade levels and an additional area of science in eighth grade. As you can see, we need to do a little bit of work in English Language Arts in sixth grade. This is an indicator that has dropped significantly over the last two years. We did have the pleasure of meeting with Mrs. Coulter today to brainstorm ideas on ways in which Mr. Wiggins, Ms. Ruthur and I are able to help her team to raise those scores and you'll see a similar score down here in eighth grade. You may have picked up over the last two slides that our areas in need of improvement are recurring in English Language Arts. It's an area that we picked up on and an area in which we are working hard to solve.
Is there anything to the bag that it seems like every other year? Or is that just happenstance that it just falls like that?
We have not come up with a reason as such, yeah, but it's a great question, that's something that we're working on. Yes, you did notice the 4, 6, 8.
Yeah.
Yeah.
As we look at and go look with the, with the principal in each building, we tend to find different things are happening, so it may just be happenstance, but we're not at that point to actually have done it with every grade level yet.
All right, and here we have high school, they have the most indicators here with regards to test scores. As you can see, there's check marks all the way down until we get to geometry with a 78.8, that one is close. We have raised that score over the last two years quite a bit. We're nearing that 80% mark. We've made some staffing changes and some changes in professional development at the high school in algebra and in geometry. We've taken a more close approach at looking at who do we have teaching what? And by doing so, what we've found is we have in the past often hired a new teacher and put them at our lowest levels of math. Bad idea. So, we should have our most experienced teachers teaching our students who are at the lowest level, laying that foundation for them and then working up. So, we've got some of our teachers with the most experience in the math department at the high school teaching these inputs this year. So, we're working with them and also working with mentoring to be able to train some of our new teachers to be able to go in and do the best they can with our foundational classes of algebra and geometry. Now, what I will say is, if you look at our report card at the high school, you'll see the high school did not make the Algebra I indicator, however, as a district, we did make that indicator. So, we have students at the junior high school who are taking algebra that are bumping that indicator up. Our sixth grade mathematics, we have the same situation there where our fifth graders who are taking sixth grade math in five points and Dennis have pulled those indicators up. So, these, if you start looking at buildings versus, you're going to see some areas where it might be a little bit confusing at first glance. At the bottom here, you see an EOC improvement indicator, that's brand new this year. EOC is an acronym for End of Course. So, at the high school level, all of these are considered end-of-course tests. And the EOC improvement indicator are students who have taken a test for a first time, they have not scored well on the test, they've done intervention and then they take it again. So, we did pass that indicator this first year of the indicator with a, with a green check.
Thank you. The last two indicators are the gifted indicator and the chronic absenteeism indicator. The gifted indicator, you can see from the red X that we did not meet and I gave you the detailing on the right of what area of that we didn't meet because if you remember the three parts to that indicator and you have to meet all three to meet the indicator total, we did not meet the performance index for gifted students. If you can see right down there, we got a 116.267, what we needed was a 117. So, we were .74 off of just that portion. We were very pleased, though, the second portion of the indicator, value added. You're required to have a C in value added, we had an A. And in gifted inputs, you're required to have 80. And in gifted inputs, you're required to have 80 gifted input points and we had 84. So we're feeling pretty confident, we just can get over this little bit of a bump, we're going to be hitting that indicator soon. The chronic absenteeism is another new indicator this year, like the EOC, and it comes about through all the change in legislation for attendance reporting and follow-up in school districts that you may have heard about the last 12 to 18 months. So they put that on our indicator to track how we are doing with getting the students to school and how much chronic absenteeism we have. So you can see we have a very low rate there of 3.1%. So we're doing a good job of getting the kids here, keeping them moving and not letting that continual absence affect their performance.
I mean, gifted indicator on the right inside.
Yes.
Is that our entire student body or is that?
No.
The students that are gifted.
Only the students that who are identified gifted when they took a test in the area that they were identified gifted in. And that is added up there. And then you're going to see in just a minute, the whole student body performance index.
What if a child is a superior cod but is not in a gifted class?
They still count for every test.
So their scores are up there?
Yes, yes. So the state says that a superior cod counts on every test and it doesn't matter if you're in service or not. So when students reach typically at Springboro, they start picking when they go to the high school. They may not want to take every honors and AP class in every subject area that they're entitled to. That's fine, but the state still counts their results into that gifted indicator portion. It doesn't matter if they're in service or not.
What was that points last year?
116.265.
So they raised the threshold of, or?
No, we didn't pass last, we were just that short last year.
I knew that was what we missed last year, I told you what the number was.
Yeah, it was that close. It was that close. So those are all the total indicators, so just a little recap for you. The achievement indicators total, we missed four, sixth and eighth grade ELA, fifth grade Science, the geometry and the gifted indicator. Those are the six that we are currently working on with our principals to get that corrected. So the total was 18 out of 24, which gave us a 75%. Remembering that this is only 25% of that component grade. The second part of that component grade is that performance index for full student body. So they take every student in the district and they rate them based on how they performed on the test and were rated that way. So our total performance index was a 100.4, which then raised because the achievement indicators were only a C. That helped raise us to a B for that overall indicator because it's 75% of that component grade. So that's why you see that difference in the final component grade. And we're back to your effort progress.
Progress is the next 20% of our report card and within progress, we fell from an A to a B overall. Gifted remained an A. Students in the lowest 20% were a C last year and they're a B this year and then students with disabilities were a C last year and they've remained a C this year. Progress is indicative of how much a student grows from the point at which they enter school with us at the beginning of the year to the end. So I don't know if you can see these colors, this is yellow here and here. Yellow is indicative of one year's growth. These greens are different greens here. Thank you. I think we just have this one in a bad spot right now. We have dark green here, we have light green. Dark green is the highest you can get, so that's indicative of more than one year's growth. Again, the light green is indicative of more than one year's growth, but that dark green is a little bit heavier. So that's actually better. So you go dark green, light green, yellow, orange, which we don't have on this chart, and then into red. So overall, when I talked about, I think gifted, Chuck covered very well, students in the lowest 20%, those are the lowest 20% in the state of Ohio. They are not, you don't take quintiles in Springboro and that's our lowest 20, but rather the lowest 20% in the whole state of Ohio. So we did raise that particular area, which we're very proud of. We don't have a lot of students in Springboro that are in the lowest 20%, but we do have some. These areas that are in red are areas that we need to work on. Again, those areas in green, we're very proud of and we need to maintain. So while we're working with those areas in red, we need to continue the work with the areas in green to continue the progress that we are making. This indicator here, this Mathematics I is no longer an area in which we test. We had students a couple of years back who instead of testing in Algebra and Geometry, tested in Math I and Math II. This particular area is a student who did not pass the Math I test years ago and retook it and did not take it or did not pass it again. So this is a very small number within our population, under three. Onto gap closing. So that 20% is done, now we're moving into the first area of the 15% compilation and that is gap closing. Gap closing is a measure of our most vulnerable students and it covers reading, math and graduation. So each of these bars indicate a subgroup. Each subgroup is made up if we have 30 children that fit the subgroup. So for instance, this subgroup across the top in light blue is indicative of our Asian population. So because it is on this chart, we have in excess of 30 students who are of Asian descent. So as we go down this list, you'll see each of our subgroups with our Asian population at a 107.6 and our multiracial students with a 105.3, moving into white non-Hispanics at 100, the Perry Winkle is all students, so all students combined at 99.9, until we have Hispanic in pink, our black non-Hispanic population, in yellow or gold, 86.5, we have our economically disadvantaged folks, and then lastly, our students with disabilities. I don't know if you recall because it's been a year, but these red dots are indicative of the measurements that the state tells us that we should have within each of those subgroups. So the state's expectations within the subgroups used to be that all students would be at this 80 mark, okay? Then they took a closer look at these subgroups and they said, you know what, that might not be fair. We might want to give a little bit more leeway to our students with disabilities who are struggling. So we see here that the state has made a decision that our students with disabilities should be at that 60 point. You'll see we're at a 64.6. That's why these red dots are all over. Everybody's charts of subgroups across the state of Ohio have the red dot in the same place. We're pleased because we have exceeded out here with all of our subgroups in English Language Arts what the state's expectations are for each of those vulnerable populations.
I understood that differently when I was reviewing this today. So can I refer to that to make sure I understand?
Certainly.
This confused me last year too. So the numbers, like the bottom one, 64.6, that's Springboro's number?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
So the red dot, this is an easy one and that's why I picked it because it's right on the line. The state's expectation is at 60, our number is 64.6. The state's expectation within our Asian population is just slightly over 90. So the expectation is slightly over 90 for the Asian population.
So for us, like our black and our economic disadvantaged are pretty much at the same here?
Yeah, they're very close. And students can, they can be in more than one subgroup.
I was wondering, what if they were in the same, in any of the categories?
Yes, so for instance, you could be a child with a disability who happens to be Asian and you could be economically disadvantaged. So you're hitting three bars.
So you would be included in all three?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, that's helpful.
Okay, this is just English Language Arts. Now we jump into math and you can see, we've had a little bit of shifting in math, but this is a slide that we were most proud of because all minority populations on this slide gained from last year. So our gap closing in mathematics for all vulnerable populations, including our students of minority, increased from last year, every single one of them. That's tough when you've got eight different areas that you're looking at to say every single area in these, so all eight in that group. Lastly, I said there were three areas within this component, graduation rate is the fourth. Within this one, you only see four bars, again, going back to the need for 30 students to be able to make up a subgroup. So think about district-wide, we had eight areas in math. Within our graduation class, much smaller group of students than district-wide, so we only have four. Last year when I presented you this slide, we only had three. So what we have here for our graduation subgroup is white, non-Hispanic, those students with disabilities, economically disadvantaged, all students. Last year, economically disadvantaged did not show up in our graduation class. That is an area that we are growing in in Springboro. So we're having more students who are economically disadvantaged within our population. So this is the first time we've seen this within our graduation rate.
Can you paraphrase about the definition of economically disadvantaged?
Be happy to. Economically disadvantaged comes from our students who qualify for free or reduced lunch. And oftentimes, we'll see larger populations of students at the elementary level who are showing as qualified for free or reduced lunch than we do at the high school. That requires in some cases, a parent to fill out a form. Some of our high school students will never take that form home. So if you look at our district-wide, we'll have a higher population of economically disadvantaged in the first, not K V because we don't serve them the lunch, in our first through eighth grade than what we will see in our nine through 12 because our nine through 12s are at a point at which they don't want the free lunch anymore, they're not going to take the paper home, they're not going to have the folks fill it out. However, there is direct certification for economically disadvantaged, which are those families who are on a food program, a snack program through the federal government, so they're receiving assistance at home. So those are automatic direct certifications, so we get those without calling for that. Overall, gap closing final grade is 100, we're thrilled with that, it can't get any higher. However, we do realize that we can individually increase those subgroups. Like when I showed you the math and I said all minority subgroups increased, that is our goal. Even though we're at 100% here, we're not going to move away from this component and focus solely on those components where we need to increase. We will continue to work with our vulnerable populations to increase those scores. Hopefully, we'll be able to say next year in English Language Arts, we raise all minority populations.
Did we do something different to focus in on that?
Yes.
What did we do?
We focus in on all student scores, so you would not necessarily need to be a student of a minority race for us to focus in on you, but you may be a student who have some needs and you happen to be of a minority race. So we're not targeting students of minority, however, we're targeting test scores that may belong to students of minority. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
You can just keep that because I only have one slide here and then it's back to you. So the next component that we're going to talk about is improving at-risk K33 readers and I do want to mention to you, there's been back and forth in the state on what they call this, they used to call it K33 literacy, but it's really not K33 literacy. It's not talking about the entire gamut of K33 literacy, it's just talking about the kids who are not on track. So basically, what I want you to think of this, after coming off Andrea's explanation of those subgroups, is this is another subgroup of students. These are struggling readers in grades K through 3. That's what this indicator is, or component, is meant for. And what they're going to do is they're going to look at the number of students that we have moved on to track compared to the number of students that started off-track. And then the second thing they do is they take RIMP deductions. You can see that we receive no RIMP deductions because two years ago, we were having an issue with RIMP deductions and we changed our whole RIMP policy about how you qualify for a RIMP. We have multiple areas of analysis where we look at them instead of just one test that does it for us. So we're very pleased that we had that zero RIMP deductions. Where we need to concentrate further now is getting students who are off-track on-track sooner because the whole idea of this is the sooner we identify you as off-track, the sooner we can put the supports in place to get you back on-track for reading because we want you to pass that third grade reading guarantee in either the fall or the spring of third grade. And we've had very good results at that endpoint, but what we need to concentrate on is getting them off that on-track status more quickly. So that's what we'll be working on going forward. The grade for this was a 47.7%, which gave us a C, which you can say it's above the middle of the C range, but still obviously room for improvement. So that's the total part of that grade.
Was this on the report card last year?
This was non-rated last year.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
And why was it non-rated last year?
Because we didn't have enough students, they do a cutoff about how many students you have on RIMPs based in kindergarten and they cut it off. If you don't meet that threshold, they non-rate you. And this year we did, or this past year, we did have enough, so now we're getting that rating.
Does that correlate with the RIMP deductions, like that we're putting them on earlier?
No, because that non-rating was for the year before.
Okay.
So no, it wouldn't have that effect because it's only that one kindergarten class and then the next year it changes.
So with the earlier detection, what are we doing to, are we like altering how we're approaching things or?
Yes, as part of that identification process to be put on a RIMP, part of that RIMP plan is what interventions we are putting in place for the student and that's all reported to the parents. Parents sign off on the document and then those interventions are put in place and progress monitored throughout the year. So yes, there's very specific things that happen for those students.
What grade does that start?
That starts in kindergarten.
In kindergarten?
Yes, that starts in kindergarten.
Thank you.
We did move our Title I reading program from Dennis Elementary, serving grades four and five, into Clear Creek, serving grade one. So that's another area in which we made some changes to assist with these children.
So it's not at Dennis at all anymore?
No.
Title I Math is.
Oh, okay.
And one reading, we figure we can get them younger, perhaps 16.
Interesting, okay.
All right, next 15% area is graduation rate. Mr. Martin hears me every year throughout the year, say, what's your, what is your graduation rate expectation from the central office? 100% average, I know it's 100%. You know, we don't have 100% though, right? Every year, we say, you know, our children spend 12, 13 years with us here in Springboro, we need to bend over backward to make sure that they walk out of here with a diploma. This year's graduation rate for four years is a 96.8, which falls in the A range. We also have a five-year graduation rate and that is a 97.5. This 96.8 is a half a percent higher than last year. So the graduation class this year compared with last year had an additional three children. So you may say, oh, what's the big deal, about a half a percent? If those three children live under your roof, that's a big deal. So we try to look at every single child as needing to leave us with a diploma, ready to go to work, ready to go into the military, ready to get post-secondary education. Three more to us is significant. It may not in the grand scheme of a half a percentage be significant to other people, but like I said, if it's your child, that's a big deal. So that's why we have this comparison here, this four-year rate and a five-year rate. Our five-year students are those students typically with disabilities who you will see walk with their class, their graduation class, they defer their diploma, we hold their diploma as a district, and then they go get further training for a job. Once they complete that training for their job, we release their diploma and they show it in our five-year rate. Our last area that is also worth 15% is Prepared for Success. I brought you this last year as a first year and Prepared for Success tells us how ready our graduates are for the real world. This cohort you can see is 901 and you're probably sitting there saying, we've never had a graduation class of 901, that seems rather large. That is the last two graduation classes. We've scored a B here, we have an 82.6, that is up 6.4% from last year when we had a 76.2. So we are increasing our score within Prepared for Success. It's very important because it is our goal not just to hand out a diploma, but to make sure our students are ready when they leave us. This component is made up of these items. ACT participation, 92% of our students participated, 61.7 were remediation-free, another 7.1 in SAT with a 6.4 remediation-free. The difference here is oftentimes when students choose to go to school on the coast, East Coast, West Coast will take an SAT, here within the Midwest, many of our students take the ACT. Two years... Two years ago, the state said, "We're going to pay for one test, one college entrance exam for every junior in the state of Ohio." What do you want to do? We've chosen the ACT, because we know that most of our students who seek post-secondary education are staying within the area of acceptance of an ACT as opposed to an SAT. Our honors diploma went up 37.4 from a 36.4. Industry-recognized credential, a 3.1. We've worked very closely with the Career Center to try to get that score up. Our expectation is any student who's participating in a Career Center program should come out with a 12-point credential. Our expectation is that will continue to rise. AP participation, students taking AP classes at a 40.2. The best, the best information on this whole slide, we believe, to be our AP exam score of three or better. Last year came in at a 15.8%. This year, it is at a 31.4%, almost doubling those students with a three or better on their AP exam, while increasing the amount of kids who are taking AP courses. Dual enrollment credit, this one kind of makes us grin a little bit, because it's got dollar signs attached to it, went from a 30, Tara's smiling, a 38.9% to a 56.7. So, we're thrilled to be able to bring you this score, as it's increased significantly from last year. And the next two slides.
Do you have a question on this real quick?
Absolutely.
So, as I look at the bar chart on the right, and you know, we've talked as a district a lot about, you know, this is a major area of focus for us, where, you know, the students believe it's very good to be ready for future success. And if I look at the, kind of, the bar chart on the right, is it something as simple as if more kids take the SAT along with the ACT, that gets us into the A range?
Not necessarily.
I mean, is it kind of like gaming on some of this stuff? Or, I'm just saying, I guess, let me rephrase it a different way. I'm impressed with what I see on the right-hand side. I'm kind of thinking to myself, where do we really push to do better to get to the A? Because we're, it'll be E. And I just...
The areas that we're, we're focusing on are here in this industry-recognized credential. Not all of our students are going on to college. We're sending about 84, 85% of our students to college. To me, if we're sending 84 to 85% of them for post-secondary training of some sort, this should be around 15.
Yeah, I get it.
So, we should be capturing students who don't plan to go to post-secondary training and have industry-recognized credentials, so they can have a living wage job when they leave us.
How does the Career Center fit into that?
The Career Center offers, each of their programs has an industry-recognized credential. This came, came upon rather quickly in the Career Center, is in what I would call catch-up mode. That's probably a fair way to say it, where these credentials came up, and then, they, what they need to do is make sure that the kids are getting the tests necessary and scoring well enough on those tests to be able to get the 12-point industry-recognized credential. Now, we did lose our curriculum coordinator over there. Joel King was doing a great job, and this was one of the areas of focus that he took on for us and other districts. They have replaced him, so we're working with a new individual at the Career Center. And I'm sure they'll be just as good as Joel, but that's an area that, that we see as, oh, gosh, we've got, if we're going to have 15, 16, 17% of our kids not go to college, by gosh, they need to leave us with something, so that they can make a wage that is a living wage, as opposed to working at a, at a low-wage job.
Now, we include students that all, like, go to the military and still...
Absolutely.
Another area, going back to your question, that you would, that we would want to see improve, as opposed to just getting more kids to take the SAT, would be that ACT remediation-free bar at the top, where we have 61.7% who get all areas remediation-free. That would be more of an area where we would like to concentrate on, as opposed, like you said, just getting more kids to take an SAT.
Okay.
And a couple of things we've done in that area. Tammy Zimmer was going full-time at the high school in gifted, as opposed to trying to split her time between gifted and guidance. And heaven forbid, on a, on a gifted day, a kid has a crisis, and then, we lose her from gifted, back to guidance, is to have her work with our partners at College Core and through the ACT. She's also offering boot camps. You probably saw that in our newsletters, where students come in, and I don't know how they do this, but they come in here at 6:00 in the morning, and they study, and they're writing their essays, and they're getting themselves ready for college. I'm not a six-day young worker, but kudos to those young people. And then, she also offers that after-school. Another thing we've done, that you are aware of, is we have an ACT prep course. It's a semester-long course. And we also have an ACT prep software that is available to all students that we pay for as a district, for them to prep. So, if they're not able to give up that semester within their course schedule, we have a software that they can access that takes, that you remember, I don't know if you guys studied the big book. I studied a big book when I was doing the ACT. That book is now all online through interactive programming students. So, they don't necessarily have to take the course, but they can do that on their... So, those are some areas that we've worked with our students on.
Is our AP participation, has that gone down and dual college credit plus has gone up?
I smile, because you're the second person today that asked that, and it has not. It's actually gone up.
Really?
Yes. So, our students are seeking rigor, which makes us very...
Good, that's good, because they get more rigor in those classes than they do in the college credit plus.
Yes, in many cases, they do.
They, oh, completely do. My kid at Bowden, they said the, what they took here at the high school, that prepared them for college, much more so than college credit plus. Yeah.
AP, they weren't wearing it.
Glad to hear that.
Okay. The next two slides are financial slides. We, we did a, we did a study of, this was from last year. This is a slide we showed you last year, and these were last year's A districts. And I know it's tiny, so I'll, I'll read the numbers.
Yeah.
So, what we did is we showed you this slide last year, the, the start of the bars at 7,619, starting here.
We started.
Okay. So, here's Springbrough, and these were all the districts that were A, south of Columbus last year. So, we have Belburg, Sugar Creek, right north of us, Oakwood, Springbrough, Wayne Local, Indian Hill, Madera City, Merrimont City, Wyoming City. So, we recreated this chart this year with all eight of us, and then, we added one. Can you draw it up for me? My goodness. So, we left in everybody from last year, and now, instead of eight bars, you'll see nine. We dropped off. Here we are at 76.96, last year, spending per pupil, starting at the end of the chart, or the beginning of the chart. Belburg, Sugar Creek dropped off. Wayne Local dropped off. So, Wayne Local's spending a little bit more than us. Belburg's spending a little bit more than Wayne Local. And then, you can see all these bars out here with per-pupil expenditures. And we added Mason in, because Mason went from a B last year to an A this year. So, Mason is the green school here. Mason is spending 10,000, it's a little blurry, isn't it?
10,157.
Thank you very much. 10,157, which is 32% more than what we spent per-pupil expenditure. But with these guys dropping off along with us, they are now the lowest per-pupil expenditure south of Columbus with an A. The highest per-pupil expenditure south of Columbus with an A is Indian Hill, who is spending roughly double what we're spending. So, we felt like putting this together as a visual to see what's happening to those of us that were at the lower end of the spending. The three of us that were at the lower end of this chart have all dropped off the A range. The one that added in is 32% higher than us. And those who have, have been able to maintain that A are spending anywhere between here, 32% higher, all the way to 100% higher than us. And we felt like, we tried to look at all aspects of the data, and we felt like we might be remiss if we didn't bring this up. We've always been very proud to be able to stick within our budgets here in Springbrough. And I know Ms. Floyd can tell you that I have never asked for a dime over my budget since I have been working in budgets in the district. But this really packed a punch when we put this together, and, and we felt like we should share it with you, to just say that it's, it's tough to maintain placement with the spending that we have per-pupil here in district. Another thing, Ms. Floyd and I had a conversation about, but I did not make a chart. I don't know that, that I did something that I want to present, but our, our buildings that struggle the most within the district have the lowest per-pupil expenditure. That's something from our curriculum and instruction department that we're going to look at, trying to even sum of that out, to look, like, you know, we're focusing in on those areas of achievement that we did not make the 80%. And in so doing, we'll be looking at, okay, what are ways in which we can raise that up? And it is glaring, the two buildings that spend the least amount of money per pupil are our lowest as far as progress and achievement.
So, is, go ahead.
So, would it be fair to say that, for anybody out in the community, that having the lowest per-pupil expenditure can affect which I would achieve?
Yeah, I think, that, that's my takeaway from not just us dropping that B, but also Wayne Local, Belburg, Sugar Creek, in relation to these that are way out here, you know, double spending here, maintaining their A. So, that is my takeaway, sir Anderson.
What's even worse than that? We are 21% less than the average, from what I have saw. 21%. We're not talking about the highs. We're talking about the average in the state of Ohio, unless I had the wrong numbers. I just did the math, and we were 21% less, which is shameful.
It's difficult. It's difficult to work within the financial parameters that we're in.
If anybody doesn't think that this affects students that are involved in this, validate that to somebody.
Thank you.
Can you help me understand the two buildings you're referring to, Junior High and...
Springbrough.
So, what do you feel from your analysis of the report card is needed at those buildings? Like, you mentioned Language Arts specifically. I'm just looking at some of those numbers. What do you feel like, is it additional staff that is needed? Is it smaller classes? Is it, like, what do you think, what are, what's causing this?
You know, I, if you look here with our math, it an 81, ELA at 74 here, ELA 84, Math 81. The areas in which we're getting those green checks, the areas in which we are making the grade as far as achievement, we're not knocking it out of the park.
Right, right.
So, we're coming very close on those. The, this particular building, the seven and eight building, our, our Science and Social Studies classes are short at teacher compared to our Language Arts and Math classes. And you might be saying, "Why are you bringing up Social Studies and Science? Because clearly, we made the grade in Science. It's our highest, you know, one of our highest scores here." And why focus on, why are you focusing on English Language Arts with this conversation? But a good portion of the reading tests, we have a lot of informational text on the reading text. Our Science and Social Studies teachers are no longer just teaching facts, and they're just teaching labs. They're teaching kids how to read in the content areas. So, when we were talking a little bit ago about industry-recognized credentials, a lot of the tests that those students are, that they have to read to pass that test are higher-level reading. So, it's not just being taught by the ELA teacher, but rather, those reading skills are being taught within Social Studies, within Science, on nonfiction informational text areas. And those are the areas in which we have our largest student population, student-teacher ratios.
I guess that's what I'm curious, because I've been hearing you throughout the years talking about how we're changing things with our ELA and getting into the deeper, so that they're ready for the Science and Social Studies. And I see that score for Science, and it's better, but then, we're seeing our drop in Language Arts, or drop, but I mean, we're not increasing where we need to be in ELA. So, I'm just, I don't know what the answer is. I'm just curious, like, what are we missing in doing that, giving to the Science and Social Studies, but we're still lagging somehow in ELA?
In six and eight, you will hear our ELA teachers beg to have more reading going on in the Science and Social Studies areas, because they know that their test scores that come back with this red X are including, including informational text. And they're saying, "But wait, the Social Studies teacher, like, they don't get these scores, because they don't have a test."
Gotcha.
But we need their help.
Gotcha.
Are you talking to them as much as you're talking to us about test scores? We know they don't have them, but they're going to help us raise those test scores, because they're reading within the content areas. They're reading nonfiction.
So, if you had extra money, that, like, instead of having 7,500 that we put towards every student, or whatever it was, if it was 8,500 and it was going towards focusing on those buildings, what do you feel like would help target some of these issues?
Smaller class sizes.
Smaller class sizes.
Targeted intervention.
Together, like, smaller?
It's going to be, it's going to have to be a multi-point approach.
It's tough if you have 33 students in a room to differentiate the instruction for 33 kids in one classroom, and then, you're doing that five times a day. So, you're trying to come up with individualized plans to address the needs, the reading needs, when you've got kids that are reading anywhere in a sixth-grade classroom from third grade all the way up to high school.
So, think of, kind of, fill in what left in this study. I, you know, as you heard earlier, you know, we have a, basically, a dollar or price tag out there for all these facilities and these needs, and we're going to staff rank them and, you know, get pretty detailed in terms of what we need to do over the course of the next decade. It's an issue of state that we feel more comfortable with, even before we talked about facilities. I feel like we need to go down a similar path with exactly what we were discussing here, which is, okay, we're in, you know, what'd you say, 33 to 1 in some of these abilities in terms of...
Here.
Yeah. So, what's, yeah, so, so what's that ideal ratio? And then, you know, we can work with Ms. Floyd in terms of what's that cost us? And then, if there's technologies out there that we've just, quite frankly, haven't considered, because we can't afford them, you know, what's, what do we need to, what do we need to do to put those on your, I, I want to call it wishlist, because that's what's, you know, how we prioritize these needs in terms of, you know, ultimately getting back to where we want to be, so that as we consider future financial, you know, funding sources, things like that, I don't want to just, I want to put it this way, I don't want to just focus on facilities. It's important, but this is equally, if not more important, that we make sure that we know the price tag of all these things that get us to where we need to be. And I know that's more difficult to go around saying, "We need to hire a fish," or maybe we might as well, but I feel like that's maybe something we really haven't thought about much, maybe.
When we, just to speak to your comments, when we don't make this, when our students don't pass their test, when they don't get a proficient and advanced, they don't get an accelerated score, the state requires us to provide intervention for each of those children. So, we're either going to pay for it with staffing in the first place, or we're going to pay for it cleaning up the mess. And I hate to say cleaning up the mess, but our students deserve to have an education that allows them to pass these tests. And when they don't, we're paying for intervention after the fact. The state requires that. Any child who does not pass their test, we have to pay for the intervention that goes in. Now, we can be creative in what that intervention looks like, but you're either going to pay it on the front, or you're going to pay on the back. So, it's going to cost us either way.
What do they consider, like, there's five levels you can get? Limited, basic, professional?
One, two, three, four, five. One and two are non-passing.
Really?
Limited and basic, non-passing, scores proficient, accelerated, advanced, or passing. So, when it comes to a student, when, when we go through these scores and we look, if you have a one or a two, you can make the three mark, we have to look and see, okay, what type of intervention are we going to offer? Now, that can look like intervention within the typical classroom. So, our model that we often think of with intervention is, okay, they're going to walk down the hall, and they're going to go see somebody else. But we can do intervention within the classroom, because a lot of times, that comes at a cost, whether that's through software, artificial intelligence programs, adding another staff member in as far as, okay, we have somebody with small class, can we combine two classes and use that person for intervention? So, we have to get very creative with that, and that comes at its own cost.
What's the accountability to the state for that? Like, the...
Just that we're honest enough to be doing it.
So, how do the, who's responsible for that?
School, district.
Who within the school district? Like, is the principal, or are you...
It reports up through, starting with the principal. It reports up through, starting with the principals. We just started this process actually through the decision framework, and then that'll move up to the CCIP with TARA, where you actually do all of this needs analysis, and you do it by building. And then Andrea and I will sit and look at the district and take the principal's input, and then we take it over to TARA, and it moves directly into the CCIP.
So this is a new thing, if they're at the one or two, that they're part of an improvement process? Will parents be told?
Yes, when we place interventions, we have to tell a parent.
Whatever this intervention is. Great, I love that. I think that's great, because it really helps parents know that we as a district are aware that their child is not at the proficient level, and we're doing something to address that. I think that's great. I didn't realize that. That's awesome.
Thank you. Glad with this large chunk of your evening that we were able to form into something new.
I like hearing that. I think that's awesome.
I have your next slide or sort of recap any questions. There's a lot, so I think after the monetary ones is the sort of recap. And I appreciate there's a lot of good detail in here. And even as you were going through all the detail, I heard lots of areas where there's an improvement. But if I step back, like, the headline is B to A, or I'm sorry, A to B, other way around, A to B. And I'm curious, you know, is it because we added the improving at-risk acre meters? Didn't have that last year? Was it specific indicators and the achievement? I'm just curious, like, what's that headline? Again, that's the questions we could ask and the things that, you know, people are asking. So just, because I didn't quite pick up as we went through the data on what really drove that, because there seemed to be a lot of areas of improvement, so.
This came out of the C. So we were not rated last year, so that 15% was not, was not factored in. So 15% at a C level is going to affect us. Our achievement dropped from last year. That, that affected us, our progress. In, in the achievement drop, some of our progress dropped. This went up, up, up.
Truly adding in that component that we didn't have, or that is probably the biggest single thing.
Mm-hmm. It wasn't.
Just seem to highlight the issue we've already had with language arts.
Yeah, I mean, I sense that as we were going through those indicators and the achievement, but I guess it just, there were lots of other places where we talked about improvement. I was curious of what that overall story was. And it sounds like you're adding in 15% of the C that wasn't in there last year is a pretty big, pretty big factor.
Something that's also worth mentioning, and you know, we don't have time to go into all the details or the details, but it's not like this just happened and now they're going to start working on it. They have, they have, well, I understand they've already begun earlier than this, implementing the changes and some, some execution to, so you're ahead of the game in one regard.
Absolutely.
You're ahead of the game in addressing these very results, which would be a whole lot different than if you just started now.
Yeah.
And so they've...
You made a good point earlier, which is, they're doing it in the framework of, they have a limited budget, and you can only expect so much with where we are right now. And I think, I guess my, one of my points earlier is that there's probably a lot more we can do had not had to adhere to a very limited, restrictive budget. With that, I might, I'll try and make sure I'm not working out.
And I'd like to thank you for your support with our coaches. So we have that line item for our curriculum coaches that come in and work hourly with, with our teachers. This information here, this 20% we've had since June, so as of the second week in June, we were pounding on the computer, looking up data, looking at kids individually, what's going to happen with our report card. This report card came out two weeks ago today. And when we received this achievement data, we kind of looked at each other and said, we just lost our A. So between here and here. But as soon as we get our data, administrators sit and they start texting all the other administrators. Did you get it? Where are you? What are you doing with this? What are you doing with that? We're looking at changes to summer school for our early readers when we offer that. Like I said, we moved Title I last spring, knowing that early intervention is better than later intervention. Our coaches are back, thank goodness. Our retirees are doing a wonderful job with us, getting out and working with our young teachers to get them into the swing of things. So there's a lot that goes on from June until the release of the full report card.
And there were, and Mr. Anderson's right, there's things that we were doing proactively last year in the improving at-risk acre through readers. We reallocated staff. We worked on new materials and new models for the teaching staff. So we were already looking at that last year and have instituted those changes for this current school year. So I hate to say it this way, but it makes me think we were on the right track making those changes when this came out, because we had realized previously that things were not happening in the way we wanted them to be.
It's important, you, we got the A grade last year. We weren't just sitting on our A's.
No, correct.
All right. Right, I mean, you guys have been working on this, and yeah, the great change, but I mean, it's, I think you said, Mr. Anderson, you already have these things in place, and continue that work, that we're not reacting necessarily. I mean, we are, we're using the data to sort of help, guide where we're going, but it's not as if we haven't been doing a lot of the stuff already.
So do you feel like, and I know we're going to be presenting this in the future, do you feel like the new strategic goals that we have in place are moving us in the direction that will help us in those areas that we need to, like, does anything you tweak with those with what you've seen from the data with this?
I think we were on the right track with strategic planning. When we worked in depth on it in July, we did have this data, and this, some of this has been addressed through it, so.
Okay, you did have that then?
We had achievement, yeah, we had the first 20% in June.
Okay, yeah. Oh, okay.
And then we wait till September to get the rest of it.
Okay, okay.
So they can give us the best of us in June, but when they get into more, obviously they can't give us this because we have to report that. The rest of it just takes till September for us to get.
Well, in fact, we don't even have all progress now. We only have progress for district and schools. They also give us progress per teacher, and that's not coming out until October. So it's quite a process to get all this data from the state.
Our teachers are jumping at the bit to see the progress scores. I have one ask me just today. When is it coming? When's it coming? And we'll do individual meetings.
That's very good.
Appreciate the work. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we take a break, please?
Hmm?
Can we take a break?
Sure. We could take a five-minute break before we resume this marathon. Yeah, part of this facility is a classroom-sized thing. It's just, you know, it's going to have space.
Well, yeah, but yeah.
But you're right, it's not all of it. We can't just look at it.
Hey, what are you doing?
We're just going to walk around.
I told her I was going to do a 5:00 AM workout tomorrow.
I think you may, you may.
Yeah.
Oh, my God. It's just a...
Oh, yeah. Yeah, and I could do it. Yeah, I could.
Yeah. They believe that.
I'm calling it out to you. I'm going to do the GMS, and we kind of lost the spirit downstairs.
I hope they've got a plan. I hope they've seen them. So you're going to work. The eggs stay out. Yeah. Bye, husband.
You've been waiting.
They'll be crying.
Great.
Yeah. I've got you listed. Yeah.
You're fresh on that.
Yeah. We did a four mile.
I can hear you, you can just say it.
I was just saying about my son. I was talking about the water fountain function. I said, well, this must be something else we did. Yeah, because it was spraying all over.
Put the lights off.
Andrea, did you have a good summer on your trip?
I did. I enjoyed myself down there. I was thinking of going out this weekend.
Yeah, this would be good.
Yeah.
Yeah, there you go. Nobody down there now.
I like to go out at least once with the freezing temperatures. It might get a little early. Although it's been so dry.
Yeah, it'll be raining.
Yeah.
I might do that.
You know, I just thought you were, but I just knocked it out.
Yeah.
Your mom, dad, everything?
It'll be our first two.
My mom is on my dad. She really loves it. She likes boating and she's still, she's... Yeah. Yeah, so we had a lot on the boat, there's some stuff that we have still buried. It's just, it's very, it's very big for you. Sometimes I think she goes, those are my years.
Does she go out on a boat with you?
Oh, yeah. It's all right. Hi, Dad.
Zero, the number is zero.
Oh, they run into their past.
Four, two, half.
Can you go down and...
Don't say that. Yeah, that was... Just to get one.
Yeah, they think it's good.
All right.
All right. I think we're ready to jump back into the next agenda item, 4.4. Still with Mrs. Cook regarding technology.
All right, now, Mr. President, members of the board, I have for you a quote from Ford Edge, and I need to preface this agenda item with the idea that this is an E-Rate project. So this is an E-Rate project, meaning that we have grant funds coming to us if we choose to use them. All this quote is a very high quote. All of the information that you have in quote is what I would call back-end usage for technology. So it's not technology that we can put our hands on, but rather technology that's on the back end. So we're talking about switches. Switches are utilized to get information from our central office hub out to our buildings. They allow our phones to work. They allow all of our technology to work, our access points. You don't necessarily physically see any of these items, with the exception of access points. I'm looking in the air to see if, I see one, so there's one right over here. So it's a replacement of 172 of those through the district. Those are the points at which you're accessing the internet right now to look at your board report. That is the only thing that you can actually lay your hands on and see from this room. The rest are of backup UPS equipment. That's equipment that's going into all buildings. If we would have a brownout or a blackout, instead of waiting for our generators to come on, all of this equipment in the APC UPS equipment would come immediately on with no loss of interruption of service with a blackout or brownout. We have some labor on here. All of this quote is, is being offered through E-Rate at a 40% discount. E-Rate works based on the socioeconomic status of your district. So different districts receive different percentages through E-Rate, through federal funding. We are a 40% district, so the overall cost of this is showing at 265,504. However, the cost to the district would be 159,302 with the discount. Now, if we choose to not do a portion of this project or any of this project, we do lose that funding. So this is in a situation whereby the federal, the federal E-Rate program hands us a check and then we decide how to pay it. They're paying a percentage of whatever project we put for. Can I answer any questions on that?
With, I'm not a technology person, is this like a five-year cycle, three-year cycle? I'm assuming this is kind of normal.
Typically, the, the switches should be a five-year cycle. We do have many of these switches that were installed in 2014. Our APs on the second, the bottom of the front page here, the Aerohive wireless, five-year support. If we do not replace those, we are out of warranty on them. So as those go bad, we don't have any backup APs. All APs are already out. So we would be paying roughly $9,000 to be able to support those annually if we choose to not replace those.
Are these all things that were in the budget already? Like, this is just maintenance of all of...
The 159 is in the budget. So this is not, I'm not asking for any additional funding for this project from what is in the budget.
Okay, okay.
Any other questions on this one? I think you're still up.
All right. The next item that I have for you is an international tour proposal. This is an interesting tour. Brenda Lynn Ramondo, who teaches at the high school in a Spanish classroom, has proposed a tour for the summer of 2021. So not next summer, but the following summer. These are done well in advance because the tour companies, for one, offer discounts, and for two, they give a long time to be able to do payment plans for families. These trips do not come inexpensively. This particular trip is with a company that we have worked with four years, EF Education Touring, and we've had great success with this company. The difference in this tour proposal and those that we have seen in the past as a district is it has a service project that is attached to it. We've not sent students on an international service project as of yet. This is the proposal on this one, where they're exploring art, culture, and service in Peru. This trip would come at no cost to the district.
Any questions, discussion? Okay. Thank you. So we'll move to item 4.6, committee reports. I think we just have budget and finance, right?
Budget finance met on September 13. We discussed the financials for August. We also, I discussed some new additions to our five-year forecasting software that will allow us to put out some new, probably charts and graphs, which I think will be helpful. We also did discuss that I am currently working on the five-year forecast and the notes, assumptions that go along with those notes. We did discuss that we will have to start having those difficult discussions about needing additional revenue, so we can discuss that during budget and finance. And we also have just received the report card data, the baby for budget finance, and we briefly touched on it, about some of the different cost per pupil amounts per building, so we went through some of those things. So the minutes are already out there on the district website. Anyone else have any additional questions? Email me.
Okay, any 4.7, any discussion of other business? Into the treasurer's report?
As well as the out-of-country trip to Peru in 2021.
All right, so item 7.3 is the approval of 7.1 and 7.2. Is there a motion to approve?
A question, none of them on a trip to Peru, go and play soccer or anything, or anything that I can vote on this.
No, they're gonna be working hard.
Okay.
Service trip.
All right.
I'll second.
Any other questions, discussion?
Um, Stewie?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Bab?
Yes.
Felaj?
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
I'm staying.
Okay, move into the assistant superintendent of instruction, Ms. Cook.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board, I'm seeking approval for the technology quote from Forward Edge.
Oh, I think we're gonna do them together, right?
Yeah, and then the other. As well as the out-of-country trip to Peru in 2021.
All right, so item 7.3 is the approval of 7.1 and 7.2. Is there a motion to approve?
A question, none of them on a trip to Peru, go and play soccer or anything, or anything that I can vote on this.
No, they're gonna be working hard.
Okay.
Service trip.
All right.
I'll second.
Any other questions or discussion?
Um, Stewie?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Bab?
Yes.
Felaj?
Yes.
Good. Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. President, members of the board, I'm asking your approval for a $2,500 change order for BPI painting. They painted the HVAC units, yeah, they did the floor, and then there was some line striking that needed to go along with that. And then 8.2 is a contract with SHP. It's a $35,000 contract, broken into two sections, 17.5 apiece. The first portion is a lump sum that's gonna be paid for the master plan, planning, and all the infrastructure, going through the schools and looking at all the infrastructure. And then the other 17.5 will be to implement some sort of project associated with that analysis. Okay, item 8.3 is the approval of 8.1 and 8.2. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion or questions?
So with that, I just want to clear up what you were just saying, make sure I understand. If we were to move ahead with a project, 17.5 would be taken off of it, but if we don't move ahead with the project, then we pay out the full 35?
That's correct. Yeah, so we're, the 17, the last 17.5 is contingent on if we do something. So, and I don't know the timeframe, it doesn't specifically have a timeframe in here, so with that being said, I don't know if that is a calendar year or if it's just sitting out there until we implement something.
So we only pay the 17.5 to begin with, then?
Yep.
Kind of when we're done with this, we make that decision, whether we pay the extra 17.5 or we put that towards a building, if that's what we decide?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, okay, thank you. I just want to make sure that's understood.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions, discussion?
Um, Stewie?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Bab?
Yes.
Felaj?
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
Stewie?
I'm staying.
Okay, move into the assistant superintendent of instruction, Ms. Cook.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board, I'm seeking approval for the technology quote from Forward Edge.
Oh, I think we're gonna do them together, right?
Yeah, and then the other. As well as the out-of-country trip to Peru in 2021.
All right, so item 7.3 is the approval of 7.1 and 7.2. Is there a motion to approve?
A question, none of them on a trip to Peru, go and play soccer or anything, or anything that I can vote on this.
No, they're gonna be working hard.
Okay.
Service trip.
All right.
I'll second.
Any other questions or discussion?
Um, Stewie?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Bab?
Yes.
Felaj?
Yes.
Good.
Thank you.
Mr. President, members of the board, I'm asking your approval for a $2,500 change order for BPI painting. They painted the HVAC units, yeah, they did the floor, and then there was some line striking that needed to go along with that. And then 8.2 is a contract with SHP. It's a $35,000 contract, broken into two sections, 17.5 apiece. The first portion is a lump sum that's gonna be paid for the master plan, planning, and all the infrastructure, going through the schools and looking at all the infrastructure. And then the other 17.5 will be to implement some sort of project associated with that analysis. Okay, item 8.3 is the approval of 8.1 and 8.2. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion or questions?
So with that, I just want to clear up what you were just saying, make sure I understand. If we were to move ahead with a project, 17.5 would be taken off of it, but if we don't move ahead with the project, then we pay out the full 35?
That's correct.
Is that correct?
Yeah, so we're, the 17, the last 17.5 is contingent on if we do something. So, and I don't know the timeframe, it doesn't specifically have a timeframe in here, so with that being said, I don't know if that is a calendar year or if it's just sitting out there until we implement something.
So we only pay the 17.5 to begin with, then?
Yep.
Kind of when we're done with this, we make that decision, whether we pay the extra 17.5 or we put that towards a building, if that's what we decide?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, okay, thank you. I just want to make sure that's understood.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions, discussion?
Um, Stewie?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Bab?
Yes.
Felaj?
Yes.
Good.
Okay, we'll do announcements and future considerations, but before that, is there a motion to mend the agenda to add the following motions? Number one would be the approval of a contract for Carrie Hester as interim superintendent effective August 16, 2019, through July 31, 2020. The second motion or item to add to the agenda would be the approval of a three-year contract for Carrie Hester as assistant superintendent of operations effective August 1, 2020. And the third piece would be the approval of a step schedule and 2% increase for the treasurer for the 2019-2020 school year. So these, this would be, again, I'm seeking a motion to add these components to the agenda. Is there a motion to approve adding these items to the agenda?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay?
Anderson?
Yes.
Bab?
Yes.
Felaj?
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
Stewie?
Yes.
Okay, so now, these have been added to the agenda. Is there a motion to approve these three items, again, one being the approval of the contract for Carrie Hester as interim superintendent, the second one being the approval of a three-year contract for Carrie Hester as assistant superintendent of operations that would take effect after the year of the interim superintendent, and then item three, the approval of a step schedule and 2% increase for the treasurer for the current school year, the 2019-2020 school year. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, any discussion, questions?
Um, Stewie?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Bab?
Yes.
Felaj?
Yes.
Good.
Okay, now we can do the normal announcements and considerations. Thank you.
Just had a couple of things. One is, it was just nice to see the community involvement that we've had so far with the facility team and the finance team, so I appreciate that we've kind of took a pause as we went through a little transition, and, but just to see the community want to be involved in the way that they have. So I think we've got a finance team meeting coming up in the next few weeks, and facility will be starting again, so encourage anybody that wants to be involved, please be involved, because we want as many people in voices as possible to hear what the community as a whole wants. So I just think that was great, how you guys took that input and really, you know, brought it forth to SHP, so, and I appreciate, I'm glad that we were able to vote on that. I think you guys have done a great job, and the administrative team has done a great job in helping us start off the year in a positive way, so appreciate that. And to all of the community members and people that did the teacher event at Heather's and staff, not just teachers, teacher-staff, all the employee event at Heather's at the appreciation, it was just nice to see all of the staff just kick back and enjoy themselves and, you know, really relax, and that was because the community came together and wanted to show their appreciation for all that's done. So, you know, this was something that started three years, four years ago, and it's just totally done by the community for our school district. So it was just a neat thing, and you could tell that the staff really felt appreciated and well-loved, so wanted to thank anybody who donated to them.
Um, I just, each of you have a little work from the career center. Kind of had the leadership as well for some items. And then I attended a dinner, we had a business advisory dinner, which was well-attended, and it's a nice function, so. Other than that, I just, I probably won't stop playing this drum, but I thought, first off, the report from Andrea and Chuck, the information was great, and their frankness and candor was even better. Because we are, and I read something where the facilities committee said, to the fact, you correct me if I'm wrong, but they like prim road because they have low taxes and high achievement. I don't know where that's at.
It wasn't that.
And so, which is great, and we can, and I think this board has done a good job of doing that, but when you start to encroach on the achievement part, then you need to ask yourself, what are we not, what are we not doing? And when Andrea said, every, we need to bend over backwards to make sure every child graduates, and not graduate with a piece of paper, but also graduate with the full knowledge that they can be successful, and if we short-change them on the achievement side because of finances, then we haven't, we've done a disservice, so I'm not gonna let this, that go. So, because I think we can have the best of both worlds, but we can't, we can't be one-sided. We have to, we have to strike a good compromise and medium, which we've always done, but to be 21% below the average is, it's hard for these, I think, so that's not too safe. Following with that, the Band-Aid box is running out, isn't it?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So, this is homecoming week, and you guys may have noticed, the hallways look great, and dance Saturday night, and the homecoming games tomorrow versus Miami's birthday, so I predict a victory.
So, yeah, first of all, thanks to Mr. Wiggins and Ms. Cook. Always a great presentation. You guys do a phenomenal job of explaining things, dummy it down, so I greatly appreciate that. You know, again, I think what struck me is a couple of things as I sat through that is, one, it was refreshing to talk about education. It's been a while, so that was, that was nice to talk about students and achievement. And then second, you know, again, as we, as we go down this path of the strategic plan, and now we're getting into attaching price tags to things, again, I want to make sure that we, as a board, recognize that, you know, going down the facilities path, and as we just approved, you know, do the next steps on that, that's very important, it's critical. But there's a separate, parallel track that we need to do with, you know, the education piece in terms of personnel, technology, you know, whatever else falls into that bucket that, you know, I hope we ensure that we address, because it's, it's great that we take care of our buildings and improve them, potentially even build new ones, but if what's going on inside is, you know, kind of nickel-and-dimed, that's really not gonna be great for us.